Good afternoon. Want to call back into session the May 9, 2017, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And thank those who were with us for the first part of today's session and also those who've joined us obviously for this afternoon session and the presentation that we have in a moment and some other items for the board's consideration. So with that, I'll turn to Paula to call the role, establish a quorum, and then we'll go right into the agenda.
Yes. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Very good. Okay, we do have an item that we're going to be continuing. So take that item at first and we'll come back to the presentation immediately thereafter. And so the item to be continued is item 51? I mean, excuse me, 52, excuse me?
52. Item number 52, I need a motion to continue to May 24 at 2:30 PM. It's the Appeal of the Planning Commission Revocation, Howe Operations Use Permit and Variance Public Hearing to Appeal the Revocation of a Use Permit and Variance for Howe Avenue located at 5260 Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard Community.
Okay. And we have given, we had a late request. Mr. Howe indicated that he was in the hospital, unable to attend today. So we've been acting very clear through the clerk's office that we intend to have this hearings per board direction on the date that we're going to continue this to, which will be two weeks from tomorrow, the 24th. And so that's either he or his representative can be here, otherwise, irrespective, we're going to be taking action that day. So it's contemplated. I just wanted to...
Okay. I need to hear the date again?
May 24th.
Okay. And it doesn't matter that his counsel has resigned, that he still has to make the improvements?
It doesn't. That does matter. That's why I give him the benefit of the doubt to be here for the hearing. But he doesn't have representation and very frankly, you know, the message that was conveyed is that he needs to be prepared for the board to act, whether he's here or not, represent or not. So that's the intent. I intend for the board to take action.
Thank you.
Okay. And I don't know, do we have anybody sign up to speak on the item? Okay. And so I think it needs to be clearly, I've been checking with the clerk, that was clearly conveyed to Mr. Howe. I understand that that was. So, okay. Very good. All right. So the motion would be to continue this hearing matter on revocation to Wednesday, May 24 at 2:30 PM in the afternoon. And please notice one more time the appellate on this so that it'd be very clear, no misunderstanding that we're going to take that. We're contemplating taking action that day. Thanks. Does the motion?
Second.
Move to second and please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Then we'll come back to item 51, in which we have a good audience for. So if you call the item, and I know that Supervisor Kennedy is going to be doing the presentation on behalf of the board, so...
Item 51 is a presentation of resolution recognizing the 135th anniversary of the Chinese Exclusion Act and the immigrant and refugee rights of today in Sacramento.
Okay. Thank you, Paula. All right. Mr. Kennedy, you're up. That hand wave was a call to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's with great privilege and pride that I am here today to introduce a resolution recognizing the 135th anniversary of the Chinese Exclusion Act and the immigrant and refugee rights of today in Sacramento County. I'm going to read a few whereases and then I'll let somebody speak if you'd like to speak to the board as well. Whereas on May 6, 1882, President Chester Arthur signed the Chinese Exclusion Act, which was the nation's first law to prohibit immigration solely on the basis of ethnicity. Whereas the Chinese Exclusion Act was renewed in 1892, 1902, and made permanent in 1904, prevented Chinese laborers from entering the United States and denied Chinese a pathway to citizenship for more than 60 years. Whereas the United States Senate in 2011 and the United States House of Representatives in 2012 unanimously condemned the Chinese exclusion laws and affirmed Congress's commitment to preserve the civil rights and constitutional protections of all people. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County Sacramento, State of California, does hereby mark May 6, 2017, as a day of inclusion in recognition of the harm caused by racially discriminatory immigration measures and to honor the contributions of all immigrants and refugees who have enriched our communities. This signed this day, May 9, 2017. I think that, you know, marking what is really a very, very dark day in our history, but at the end there, it got better with the repeal. But, you know, it's important that we remember, as they say, if we do not study history, we will be condemned to repeat it. And I think that in this day and age of great uncertainty, and as we know, we have many refugees and immigrants coming to our county already still. And I'm proud to say, and they're being very welcomed. So with that, who would like to speak?
Thank you very much Supervisor Kennedy. My name is Greg Jung and I'm president of an organization called OCA. OCA is a national membership organization founded in 1973. It is a membership of where our charge is to provide the well-being for APIs around the country for social, political, and economic causes. Our chapter here, and these are some of our board members, we're celebrating our 22nd anniversary. We were here, founded in Sacramento in 1922, and we're very proud and we're very honored to be with you today. Our organization, our board members, we've worked very hard to support our community here in Sacramento. And the opportunity to be with you this afternoon, to recognize this anniversary, again, we're very honored and we're thankful for you. And with that, again, with this resolution, nationwide, our organization has asked city municipalities and state to recognize this, and we hope this does not occur again. So thank you very much for your time this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good. Thank you.
Oh, yes, sure. They'd like a picture. Well, let me get all the board members back here.
Susan, I said, how about if we all come?
Oh. I have a cold. My ears are blocked. I can't hear.
Oh, no, it's okay. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you, Patrick.
Okay, again, once again, thanks to all our guests here today and appreciate their efforts in our community as well. Thank you Supervisor Kennedy. All right, with that, then we can move to the next timed item, which is our item 53. Paul?
Item 53, public hearings on the benefit category changes and levies of increased service changes for the Garfoot Greens and Gentry Place subdivisions within Zone 1 of County Service Area Number 1.
Okay. Mr. Davidson, good afternoon. Chief in charge today. Very good.
Bob Davidson with the County Engineering Division. And like was just said, this is, these are two public hearings to be held concurrently for the benefit category changes and the levies of increased assessment, I mean, service charges within Zone 1 of County Service Area Number 1 for two subdivisions, the Garfoot Greens subdivisions and the Gentry Place subdivisions. As you know, CSA 1 does fund street and safety light maintenance in operation throughout the unincorporated area. These two rate change processes will change the rates from the current rates to the proposed rates. So with the Garfoot Greens subdivision, there are actually two existing lots, which will become 77 lots with the subdivision map. And they will be going from one lot, which is currently safety light only category, and one lot, which is property and safety light residential categories, to 77 lots, which will be at the enhanced street and safety light residential category, which will have a rate of $44.77 per parcel. For the Gentry Place subdivision, it's currently one property at the safety light only rate. With today's action, it will be going through a protest ballot process to change the category to the enhanced, the enhanced street and safety light residential category, which is again at the $44.77 per parcel rate. So with that, I'm recommending that your board direct the clerk to open the ballots and tabulate the ballots for each of these two proceedings. And after that, after the ballots are tabulated, the clerk will read a statement regarding the outcome of the ballot process, which then, if there's no majority protest, then the board may adopt each of today's resolutions with the information provided by the clerk's tabulation.
All right. So we do have the public hearings open and you want to proceed then?
So with that, I would suggest the clerk open up, you could go in any order you want. So just, I would read who it's from and what the ballot, what the information says on the inside.
We're doing Garfoot Greens and Gentry?
Oh, right. There's a Garfoot Greens subdivision and a Gentry Place subdivision.
Okay. So then just put that out, which one you're opening and what the vote count is.
This is Garfoot Greens. Okay. Legal owner, J.A. Fowler Family Foundation, parcel numbers 1220120045 and 1210120051, site address, 8070 Vineyard Road, Sacramento, 95829. Annual service charge, $44.77 per residential parcel. And yes.
It's 100% votes, yes.
So that would be one ballot cast and their vote was yes, if I could understand that correctly?
Right. That was for Garfoot Greens. So now we're doing Gentry Place?
Okay, Gentry Place. Legal owner, Sandra Weber, Eric Weber, parcel number 2130190032, site address, 9281 Central Avenue, Orangeville, 95662. Annual service charge is $44.77 per residential parcel, and the vote is yes.
Okay. So there's the tabulation. Thank you to the clerk for doing that. So Bob, what's the next step? You need us to affirm that then?
Okay. With that, I suggest that your board take these one resolution at a time. So for the resolution related to Garfoot Greens, I would, I'm recommending that your board adopt today's resolution. But I would point out that based on the clerk's tabulation, that in Section 2, there's a couple of blanks in the resolution. And that would, in Section 2, it would read that the board had received zero written protest.
Okay.
And Section 3 would be reading as follows, "At the close of the tabulation, the board has received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of service charge rate category and 0% was in opposition." And with that change, I would recommend that your board adopt that resolution.
Okay. Entertained motion? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Then to approve the resolution as noted, nothing further than please vote.
Unanimous vote.
That's for Garfoot Greens. Okay, next.
Okay. Now for the Gentry Place resolution, I'll read Section 2 again. I mean, the Section 2 for Gentry Place, that is. "At the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protest." And then Section 3 would read as follows, "At the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of service charge rate category and 0% was in opposition." And with that change, I would recommend that your board adopt the Gentry Place resolution.
Okay. Motion be in order? Okay. Move to second then to approve the resolution as noted for the Gentry Place subdivision. And if nothing further by board members, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. There you go. Thank you very much, Bob, for walking us through that and concludes that item. All right. Next item, please.
Item 54, approve the 2017 Neighborhood Traffic Management Project, Program Projects.
Okay. Mr. Mogisi, I see him coming down.
Good afternoon. President Mogisi, Department of Transportation.
And I would just note while you're getting ready, for those in the audience, I have some folks already signed up. But if you're here to speak to any of the items on the Neighborhood Traffic Program, fill out speaker form, we'll call upon you when we're done with the presentations on this. So, thanks.
The item before you relates to the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. We're here to ask for your approval of traffic plans for two projects. The two projects that are before you are part of a group of 40 projects that your board approved funding for back in August of 2016. For clarification, a Neighborhood Traffic Management project is a single residential street which has been petitioned by its residents for speed bumps or speed tables. So Neighborhood Traffic Management projects propose to install speed bumps or speed tables on residential streets to address speeding. The 40 projects are throughout the county and they are all in five supervisory districts. Although we're presenting traffic plans for two projects today, staff has developed traffic plans for all 40 projects and has worked with neighborhood residents to support, to build support for all those traffic plans. As shown here, the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program process consists of four steps. Step one begins with residents submitting a petition requesting traffic calming devices, in this case, speed bumps and speed tables on their streets. Once a petition is received, staff collects traffic data, analyzes the data, and ranks and prioritizes the projects for funding. Once a year, staff brings a list of candidate projects to the board for funding approval. In the case of 2017 NTMP projects, the funding occurred in August of 2016. Once the funding is approved, we focused on planning or developing plans, traffic plans, for all the projects and work with neighborhood residents to build consensus for those plans. As part of this step, we asked residents to vote by ballot card to express their support or opposition for the proposed plans. As a minimum, we require a 50% response rate and 65% support rate for a project to be recommended for approval. The last step is board approval of the traffic plans. That's why, that's the reason we are here for the two projects. Based on the board-approved criteria, projects that have a support rate less than 65% are not qualified for further consideration. Basically, the lack of support is, disqualifies the project for further consideration. And projects with a support rate between 66 and 74% require a board hearing for the traffic plan. And we have two projects which fall within this category, and that's, they are going to be presented to you shortly. And finally, projects with a support rate of 75% or greater may be constructed without further board action unless a petition for a board hearing has been filed with the Department of Transportation. We have one project that falls within this category. Based on the survey results, 37 projects have greater than 70% support rate. So 36 of those projects have been fast-tracked and have made it to construction phase already. One of the 37 projects is before you because we received a request for a board hearing, and that project requires your approval. And one project has a support rate between 65 and 74%, and again, we have one project that meets that criteria. And two projects didn't meet the requirements, therefore they have been dropped from further consideration. So the two projects that we're asking your approval for are Linda Rio Drive and Rio Verde Way. As you can see, the Linda Rio Drive has 81% support rate. But again, due to a petition received by a resident to, for the board to hear that, you are going to consider and approve that project. And the second project has a support rate that would require your approval. We are asking your approval of the two traffic plans. And with your approval of those two plans, we intend to begin construction and complete all 40 or 38 projects within the next four or five months. The estimated cost for all those 38 projects is about $500,000. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you, President. Let me ask members of the board any questions about the list or any of the projects listed on that list? Okay. If not, then we do have some speakers on at least one of the locations that we're having the hearing on today. And so I'm going to, oh, Sue Frost, Speaker Frost, excuse me?
I don't have any questions, but I did want to, I do have a request for next year.
Okay.
But I can ask it after the public speakers.
Okay. We'll come back to that then. So noted. All right. So we have four speakers signed up to, I think, believe, speak to the Linda Rio Drive neighborhood area. And I'll take these in order, they were given to me, Jonathan Warren, followed by Sandra Mallett, followed by William Mallett, and Emily Burgos. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Warren. I live on Linda Rio Drive, 9119 Linda Rio.
Sorry, could you speak up, please?
I dotted some of my thoughts down on paper here, simply because I might get tongue-tied.
Okay.
Got a copy for you if you want them.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Now, I don't know if you could bring up the...
Which road are you speaking of?
I apologize. I'm speaking about Linda Rio.
Linda Rio. Okay, great.
You can probably get a map up. Do you want to get a map up there? Hang on just a second. Staff report?
The one where it says the project numbers on there?
I want the project list, this one?
Yeah, I had like number 24, number 20.
Okay, yeah.
What's right here?
Oh, he wanted PowerPoint. He wanted one with all the project lists, I guess. Paula, can you call that back up?
No, I'm talking about this, the graphic on here.
Yeah, we're going to do. We have different ways of doing it. Okay.
No, it's...
No, you want the one with all the projects on it?
No, not the...
The PowerPoint.
The PowerPoint, right. The PowerPoint that you presented where it showed the project number and the location?
Two of the projects. So it's in the PowerPoint.
Right there, yes. Thank you.
Okay.
You'll notice on your screen, it says Linda Rio Drive from Whitewater Way to the East End.
I'm sorry, you'll have to speak louder.
Sorry. You'll notice on your PowerPoint up there, it says, "Project number 24, Linda Rio Drive from Whitewater Way to the East End of Linda Rio Drive." And I really have no problem with that at all. The problem I have is if you take a look at the map, they expanded the area to include west of Whitewater Way as well. We live on Linda Rio between Whitewater Way and La Riviera Drive. And their traffic study was for, was for, from Whitewater Way to the East End of the street, did not include our area. We understand that there are some concerns on Linda Rio, that's why I'm not arguing against the whole thing, over on Larchmont Riviera Park. the whole thing, over on Larchmont Riviera Park. They have a lot of soccer games, soccer practices, where you have limited visibility. A lot of kids are crossing the street right there. The road narrows because all the cars parked on either side. That seems to be a pretty big concern. Over on Crawford's Barn, you have a lot of special events. You have the same situation there. And I'm not really debating whether you should have a speed table there or not. I'm just saying that on our block of the street, it's a completely different situation, and it wasn't supposed to be included in the scope of the NTMP. Besides that, we have good visibility on that street. We're sandwiched between two stop signs already. We have seven or eight houses in between stop signs, so people there don't get up too fast anyway. The majority of the traffic we're having there is in the morning and the afternoon, where parents are picking up their kids at school over at the Earl of Wine. And, but they usually go around the speed limit. We don't have a lot of speeding there. Another thing is, if, it's not absolutely necessary, we don't really want that on our section of the street, because we have all the extra signage, pavement striping, guest parking in front of our houses is going to be eliminated. We don't want the increased noise and pollution from the braking, accelerating, when people go over the, over the table. And we think it's going to affect our property values. And we knew we were purchasing a home on a busy street, and this isn't, not some cul-de-sac. Okay, we knew that there was going to be some traffic there. Regardless of this, we don't allow our kids to play on the street, because that's just the nature of the street, just like you wouldn't want a kid to play on Watt Avenue. Okay, you got a certain amount of traffic, you don't let your kid play there. So the installation of this speed table is not going to change much for us. It's not going to help us, is what I'm saying. Besides that, well, we got, you know, the usual things. The noise, the pollution from cars taking off and slowing down right there. It's going to slow emergency responder vehicles. We do have a lot of old people in our, maybe I should just say elderly people on our street, and not very many kids. In fact, the people on this, our block who have children, everybody we've talked to, and there's only a couple of us, are opposed to putting the speed table there.
Okay, and I'm sorry, you said you're on Linda Rio between Whitewater and what?
And La Riviera.
Okay.
Which was supposed to be...
And what's your primary reason for not wanting it? We've already covered the pollution and the noise and that kind of thing. So what's the main reason?
Besides the property values is a good reason. It's a completely different situation than what's going on over at the parks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And like I said, I'm not against the entire thing. I don't think we have to take 100% of this NTMP and, or nothing. I'm just asking that we strike that one speed. That's one speed table that's over by Raw Hide Way, which was not supposed to be in the traffic study to begin with.
Okay. So, thank you, Jonathan. So again, your, your opposition to the speed table there, the first one on Linda Rio Drive. Okay, thanks. Okay, next, we have Sandra and William.
Is that everything on Linda Rio?
No, the next three speakers are...
Okay.
Yeah.
Three more on Linda Rio.
Good afternoon, and thank you, board members. Okay, nervous. I live on Linda Rio Drive, and I want you to please trust your traffic study people, trust your engineers, the people who went to school. We live in times where we're worried about, we're worried about safety, and people are driving distractedly. We all know that in 2017, there's been a 14% increase in fatalities as far as people driving. How many times have you reached for the phone that isn't really ringing in your car, but it's ringing in your car? When our, when our neighborhood was established, people had, there weren't the distracted drivers. I think you should go with the traffic study. I live directly across from the park. The usage in our park has changed. Our neighborhood is changing. We have new children coming in, new families coming in. So, yes, I'm one of the old people who live in the neighborhood, but I'm seeing new people as well, with kids in strollers. So, please, look at safety, look at distracted drivers. We all have screens in our car. The usages, our park has changed. It used to be a community, a community, a month and a half, you know, a pickup park. Now we are, we're a competitive league park, and we work very closely with them. And as recently as November 30th, between La Riviera and Clearwater, there, our beloved postal worker was hit by a distracted driver. And her mail jeep ended up in the, in the middle of the road. On December 15th, 2016, at 9116, there was a car totaled because of excessive speed and not paying attention. People are distracted when they drive. You know this. You have paid people who know what they're doing to, to help us remain as safe as we can here in Sacramento County. I'm asking you to please approve the plan. And as it is sitting, it did receive 81% support rate from our, from our neighbors. So that is the only reason I'm speaking in that. Thank you, first of all. We've been looking forward to this for years. And, and just, we, please approve it, and thanks.
Thanks, Sandra. Okay, Sandra is followed by William Mallett, and then Emily Burgos. And those are the last two speakers. Anyone else want to address this? Now's time to get a request in, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, board. I'm speaking in favor, obviously, of approval of the final traffic plan for Linda Rio Drive. Like I said, I'd like to trust the professionals. We've spent a lot of high-end dollars on this study already, and I think they've done a great job. I'd like to, I'd like to see it approved. It does get a lot of usage. People do drive too fast. And as you just heard there, in November and December, this past, November, December, there was two very serious accidents caused by distracted drivers. And as you can, it's hard to see on this little map, but there's some little curves and things right here. And people get going too fast. They look at their phone. Next thing you know, they ran into somebody because it was just out of sight around the curve. So again, thank you for your consideration. I'd like to see these in. We've had five accidents right across the street from our house, right adjacent to Larchmont Park in your map. And we'll be getting a speed table right in front of our house, and I think it's great. They recently put one in last year on Vancouver Drive, or a set of them. And I've gone down there to observe how it works. And people slow down. They learn what's going on. It's usually part of their route. And I don't hear a lot of braking. I don't hear a lot of acceleration. They slow down. They go over it. And it just slows everybody down. So I think it's a good plan. Thank you. I heartily approve.
Thank you.
Thank you, William. Okay, Emily.
Hi, thank you. I guess I'm here to represent the younger folks on the street who would like to make families that don't get squashed. I live on Linda Rio between La Riviera and, I believe, Whitewater. Yeah, I'm short, sorry. So I live, and my neighbor Kelly lives, right before the stop sign. So we would really love this speed plan, just because it would set the precedent for how quickly people should drive on our street. I know when people leave La Riviera and head down Linda Rio, you know, they're still accelerating. They're not going very fast. But by the time they get to my house and Kelly's house, they're speeding right through that stop sign. And as others have mentioned, there's curves. This street leads to a park. It leads to an elementary school. And this speed table will really help set the precedent for how quickly people should drive. You can put it in front of my house if you want to, just because we really want people to stop at that stop sign. But just to reinforce some of what others have said, you know, we love this neighborhood. We want to build our families in this neighborhood. The speed table just helps make it more safe for us. I've lived here for six years and was relieved and overjoyed. And we opened a bottle of wine when we got our survey about the traffic plan. So thank you, and I am so grateful for this opportunity. I work for the government, and I always get to do what these folks do. But I was psyched at the opportunity to actually come as a member of the public and respectfully request that you approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you for your public service. Okay, that's all the speakers that signed. If anyone else wished to address either one of these items or any other related traffic matter?
Before we go on to the next street, I'd like to...
Sure.
...ask DOT a couple of questions. First gentleman that spoke that was against this had a couple of comments that are things that I think DOT has already investigated in other...
Sure, yes.
Things like slowing responder vehicles. I do believe Metro Fire has signed off on speed bumps?
Yes, we have coordinated with them, and they're fully aware of our plan.
And then, there's a question about the, speed bumps are between stop signs with only seven or eight houses in between. Could you comment on that, please?
Basically, because there are already always stops along this stretch of roadway or street, we have tried to place the proposed speed tables in between the speed stop signs so as to improve the level of effectiveness for lowering the speed on that street. Now, I also wanted to comment on the question that was posed by the gentleman about the limits of the project. We can have the overhead display, please.
Metro Cable could enlarge that. That'd be helpful. Larger. There we go. Thanks.
Yes, good.
I don't know about that.
Watch what you wish for. There goes the affinity.
Back it down some?
Have to reset.
Metro Cable?
Yeah, they'll reset it.
Move it over a little.
Back it down, please.
There you go.
Well, I don't...
They're doing, they're doing. Just take some minutes to adjust the camera.
Just move the exhibit over a little. Highlight this part, right?
Okay. Actually, wanted to.
Good.
There we go.
Yes.
Very good.
Basically, the limits of the project are east end, which is all the way to the east, goes to the west, and all the way to La Riviera Drive. Our PowerPoint presentation had a typo in that it showed the limits to be Whitewater Way, which is incorrect. When you look at the map in your package, also correctly depicts the limits of the project as being La Riviera and East End. So we intended to cover the entire length of the street, which is east end to La Riviera. And the entire residents of this section were surveyed, and the plans were sent to them. And in fact, one of the proposed speed tables seems to be with, between Whitewater Way and La Riviera. Within this section, there's only two no votes. Everybody else is in favor of the speed table that we are proposing here, which is between Waterway, Whitewater Way, and La Riviera. So this is just a clarification that the scope of the project was all the way, the entire street.
Okay, that answers one of my questions that I hadn't asked yet, but that's fine. So I guess it would be the theory behind having seven or eight houses between a stop sign and a speed bump. Is that usual? Does that have any downside to it that you know of?
The best, the most preferred way is for the, for the speed table to be in between the stop signs. And that's what we have tried to do. Obviously, there are some constraints, driveways, or that would, you know, dictate to some extent as to where we can place the speed table. But in general, that's what we strive for.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We didn't have any, no one here on the other street signed up, so that was all we had. And I think Supervisor Frost had a question, too, so.
I have a question.
Oh, sure. Jonathan, I'd like you to come up very quickly. We don't, we don't get into back and forth, but if there's something else you want to clarify, I think.
Sure. I think it's a little disingenuous to say that the scope was always supposed to be La Riviera to the east end, when I have a traffic study form right here from March 2016 that clearly says Whitewater to the east end.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for pointing that out.
But they got votes from everybody. So I'm sorry, we can't make everyone happy in this process, but I'm going to move approval of this staff item as is.
Okay. All right. In that, okay, so we have a motion?
That was my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All right, before we vote, did you want to make a comment, Supervisor Frost?
Yes, I did want to ask DOT if you would consider for next year, a road that is in my district, District Four. And it's Scott Road. I receive a lot of complaints about Scott Road. Flooding during the wintertime, sharp turns, people that speed, and there's hills and valleys where people that aren't speeding are feeling nervous that someone's going to fly over. It's just, there, I know my staff are working with you, but I just wanted, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, but I thought for next year, if you could consider looking at ways that we can mitigate some of the fears that people have about Scott Road, maybe the flooding. I know there were some ideas on how we could work on some cost-effective, cost-effective ways to work with that rather than have to build bridges. Anyway, I wanted to put in my request for next year. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else on any traffic matters? If not, then we have a motion second to approve the staff recommendation. We would thank you to all of our speakers who've been here today representing their concerns and thoughts about the proposal. All right, if nothing further, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right, very good. Thank you all for being here. Next item is set for 3 o'clock, so we got about one minute. I guess we can go to our nominations.
3 o'clock.
Oh, 3 o'clock, okay. Good. So call the next item in, please.
Item number 55. You're introducing an ordinance adding Chapter 6.90 Title VI to the Sacramento County Code relating to resale and possession of butane. You're waiving full reading, and you're continuing to May 23rd for adoption. The document is not applicable.
What's not applicable?
Yeah.
I think what that means is the environmental document. We did not prepare one, given that it's not a project.
All right. All right, Mr. Puhli.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Natoli, board members, Chris Puhuli with Planning and Environmental Review. It's my pleasure to present this item, which introduces an ordinance amending the county code related to the resale and possession of butane. I have just a few formal remarks. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation to assist with this presentation. At the board's April 25th hearing, Supervisor Serna requested staff research and draft an ordinance related to butane sales and possession, given the negative effects in unincorporated county neighborhoods due to illegal cannabis honey oil explosions. The main culprit in those explosions is the use of butane to extract THC from marijuana plant material in order to make honey oil or concentrated cannabis. The butane is highly flammable and odorless, which leads to the unprecedented danger for people in proximity to the operation, as well as first responders and law enforcement. Staff has drafted a proposed ordinance that is intended to limit the amount of butane that can be purchased at stores in the unincorporated county. The draft ordinance is modeled after similar ordinances adopted by other cities and counties in Northern California. Highlights of the proposed ordinance include that it limits the resale of butane to more than, to no more than 600 milliliters in a single transaction. For point of reference, butane is commonly sold in eight-ounce containers or 236 milliliters. So we're looking at roughly two canisters of butane in a common size format. The ordinance also requires that no more than 600 milliliters can be purchased per month, per individual. month, per individual, and makes it illegal to possess more than 600 milliliters at any one time. And the ordinance requires retailers to prepare a bill of sale with required information and check customers' identification at the time that they purchase the butane canisters. I should note that butane that contains an odorant is not included in the ordinance, ordinance's definition of butane. That is because butane that is refined is odorless and preferred for THC extraction as to not contaminate the concentrated product. Stores selling odorized butane are not subject to the restrictions of this ordinance. The ordinance also contains three exemptions to the 600 milliliter possession requirement. The first is that if you are a reseller or wholesaler of butane. The second is if the butane is solely for the purposes of a county licensed commercial operation. And lastly, if the butane in possession has an odorant additive included in it. Staff should note that people will still be able to purchase butane online or in other jurisdictions. However, staff views this ordinance as another useful tool in combating illegal marijuana cultivation and THC extraction operations in county communities. Violations of the ordinance are a misdemeanor and subject to financial penalties or jail. Should the board adopt the proposed ordinance, staff will work on distributing informational materials to county businesses through direct mail and utilizing the county's e-distribution systems to inform them of the requirements in the, inform them of the new requirements in the code. In closing, staff is recommending the board introduce the ordinance, waive full reading, and continue to May 23 for adoption. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, thanks, Chris. I know we have a number of speakers here that wish to speak on this, but is there any questions of staff at this juncture? Mr. Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Chris and our staff, especially County Council's Office, who's, who's worked swiftly since my request at our last hearing for something to be, come back before this board. As recently, unfortunately, as recently as, I believe, just last week, I think there was yet another instance where, I believe it was in, somewhere in Sacramento County, I'm not sure if it was unincorporated or not, where another home processing honey oil lab was discovered, and of course, large amounts of butane were recovered at the, at the site. And so, I think it's timely that this come before this board, as was mentioned in Chris, in his, in his staff report. Other Northern California jurisdictions in particular have given this a lot of thought, and I'm glad to see that this board has given the opportunity this afternoon to, to do the same. So, I'm eager to hear, Mr. Chair, from our public safety officials that have chosen to join us today, hopefully to provide affirmative testimony.
Okay, good. Any questions then of Chris? If not, thank you, Chris, for your work, and stand by if you would. I don't have any speaker forms, so I trust we have folks from both Sheriff and Fire, and maybe other agencies that are here, so if you want to make your way to the diaphragm, there's any particular order, but I see our District Attorney, Emery Schubert, represented from the Sheriff's Department, Mr. Rilgi, and our fire personnel.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to come over and speak to you about this ordinance, proposed ordinance, and I appreciate Supervisor Serna carrying this and bringing it to our attention. Over the past three years, there have obviously been many explosions and fires that have been caused by butane hash oil labs, causing millions of dollars of property damage, as well as severe burns to dozens of people within our community. Butane hash oil labs present an extreme danger not only to the perpetrators, but to innocent bystanders and neighbors. In our county, in 2015, our office filed 46 cases involving butane hash oil, and in 2016, we filed 38 cases. In one particular case from 2014, which occurred in the Rancho Cordova area, over 140 residents of a Rancho Cordova apartment complex were displaced when two residents caused an explosion while making butane hash oil. The two perpetrators spent months in the hospital. In other cases, several children have been present when an explosion has occurred in their home. One child has been burned, a responding firefighter has been burned, and multiple pets have been killed. In 2014, the chief of Shriners Hospital, who's a person by the name of Dr. David Greenhall, described hash oil burns as an epidemic, with Shriners Hospital treating 68 burn victims over a period of three years. He conducted a study that found that the average child treated for a butane fire injury has burns over 28% of their body. It's not surprising that oftentimes that the beds are filled at Shriners with individuals that have been perpetrators of these crimes, taking the place of other children from other types of burn incidents that need treatment. Currently, butane is obviously widely available throughout the county in unlimited quantities. The ordinance will greatly reduce the amount of butane available to would-be hash oil manufacturers and create what I would call is a chilling effect on individuals who purchase butane for that purpose by requiring the purchases to be documented. The system of this regulation has worked well in the past. When Sudafedran became regulated, it essentially choked off the fuel supply for methamphetamine labs, and as a result, methamphetamine labs have virtually disappeared in our county. And with that, I would urge this board to adopt this regulation and help keep us safe here in Sacramento County. I do have some photographs, if the board would permit, from one particular case. I did not, I chose not to bring any of individuals because, quite frankly, even in my business, they're very disturbing, but I did bring photographs for each of the board members and an extra copy to show, if you wish, of the apartment complex in Rancho, to show the devastation of what this kind of explosion occurs. So, if you'd like to see them.
Yeah, maybe you can place a, place one copy right on that screen there so everybody can see it, and then you can distribute.
You're making me dizzy.
Sorry. I haven't done this in a while.
There you go. It's going away. Can you bring it back up, please, a little bit?
Can you make it a little larger?
Why doing that? Who's doing that?
No, no.
No, not you.
They gotta shift the transmission to, there we go. There you're going. I think that zoom function, function's a little touchy. There we go, right there. Good, thank you.
This is just one picture, and then here is some photographs of the actual butane oil. You can see the damage it's done to this restroom. Exploded out the window. And then obviously, the firefighter's engaged in trying to stop this. And then lastly, just one photograph shows the damage to the restroom. So, pretty devastating property values, but it's no comparison to the human toll that it takes.
Right. Emery, if you just put that back up real quickly, just a second, I think the second photo, was that showing the, the containers? Was that a?
Yes, I believe these are the butane canisters.
And how big are those canisters?
Those, I'm going to have to ask my resident expert ahead of our major narcotics unit, is that, or the fire guys? I'm sure they can answer.
Those are the eight ounce, standard sized containers.
Those are, okay. I just, was that reflected there? So, it was sitting on the tub or the basin there, so it gives you a perspective, so.
Look at who's got show and tell.
There it is.
Is that 300 milliliters?
This is 300 milliliters.
Not even that big.
And these one, this one's just under 600.
Okay.
You could speak into the microphone, that'd be helpful.
John Barzil, Supervisor and Investigator, Sacramento Fire District. As it was briefly spoken, we started tracking these incidents at the end of last year, and as of November, we came up that BHO incidents started occurring in Sacramento region mid 2008. The first reported case occurred in an apartment located in Sacramento City. The number of incidents continued to rise to the point for the, to date, which of November was 33 recorded incidents, with the majority of the incidents occurring in 2014. There were 18 recorded incidents that year. The city had a total of 11 incidents to date, with a combined fire loss of just under $800,000. The average loss per incident was just under $70,000. Metro Fire has had a total of 19 incidents, 14 of which occurred in 2014. The combined total dollar loss was $2.1 million, with an average loss of 112 per incident. We, so far, just in Metro, we've had three incidents this year, and three patients went to the hospital in February. I think one's still in intensive care, and I don't know what his outcome's going to be. He's got over 60% burns to his body.
All right. Thank you, John. Mr. Chair, Mr. Serna?
Before DA Schubert goes too far, I want to publicly thank her. It was because of a conversation she and I had during one of our regular briefings where I, I asked some questions about this, that, that precipitated acquisition of some other ordinances from other Northern California jurisdictions that her office kindly provided, which set us on a path to really, as I mentioned before, have our county council do the legwork, the homework, to figure out how best we can make this suitable for this board's consideration and for this county. So, thank you to DA Schubert for that.
Yeah, thanks, Emery. Okay, we all have sheriff probation and Metro Fire others that may want to speak to, so please, just in the order you would choose.
Good afternoon, Chief Deputy Phil Rilgi from Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. I too want to urge the board to support this effort. It's a great tool for law enforcement that we have. Last year, we had 15 of these honey oil labs. Since 2012, we've had 58. We continue to see them on the rise, and it's just another great tool for us to help combat this, save lives, structures, and money for the county of Sacramento. So, I also urge the support of this ordinance as written.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, one of the things that I've, I've learned just in doing my own research on the subject is that the refined butane, which is what we're talking about today, not the kind that has the ethyl mercaptan that's, can be added to odorize it. When it's odorless like that, because it is a vapor that is heavier than air, it sinks and it concentrates, and oftentimes, the ignition source can be something as simple as a pilot light for a water heater. Even, I've heard electrostatic discharge can actually ignite some of these fires. So, for our law enforcement personnel, if, if it's suspected that you would be, you know, our patrol officers, our deputies would be responding to a scene where BHO processing is suspected, is there added concern in terms of, you know, whether or not to use tasers, whether or not to even discharge a firearm because of the presence of something that's odorless? You don't even know if you're standing in it.
That is correct, and we do conduct training for all our patrol officers for that type of purpose, whether we can, or a honey oil lab, or a meth lab, or any type of those labs. We do work with scenarios to negate the discharge of firearms or tasers in those type of environments for that reason.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Phil. Thanks for being here, for the sheriff's support. Okay. Metro Fire?
Good afternoon. Battalion Chief Steve Turner with Metro Fire here on behalf of Chief Todd Harms. Supervisor Serna, thank you so much for carrying this forward for us. So, we've heard some of the statistics, we know about the people that it's hurt, we know about how dangerous it is, the first responders that are dealing with this. I will tell you the other part from going to these fires and commanding these incidents, it's when the neighbors come out, and they're aghast that this stuff is being used in their, in the home next to them, or apartments next to them, that type of thing, and they've asked us, what can you do about this? And, and this is the answer here. So, this is, this has been for many years, a product that has not had, has never been used in this type of way, been used normally and safely and such. That's ended. And so, us having an appropriate response to that about an ordinance like this is critical. So, thank you very much, and on behalf of the Fire Department, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Steve, for being here this afternoon, on behalf of Chief Harms. Probation?
Good afternoon. Marlon, you're our Assistant Chief here for Chief Seal. Sorry you couldn't be here today. I won't reiterate or restate essentially everything that's been said, but just would really echo that same concern. For the probation department is essentially that, is it is greatly an officer safety concern for our staff. The most recent data I'm aware of, I think we have 91 cases of people on probation for this exact same thing, manufacturing essentially, honey oil. So, would like your support, obviously, in that regard. So, thank you.
Thanks, Marlon. Okay, sure.
Hi, I'm Mike Five with the Sacramento Area Firefighters, Local 522. I also wear a couple hats. I'm also an executive board member for the Firefighters Burn Institute here in Sacramento that has funded the burn unit up at UC Davis, as well as I represent the International Association of Firefighters in the 10th District, which is New Mexico, Arizona, California, Hawaii. This has been a huge incident or thing for us here regionally. We've been trying to bring forward education, and I appreciate the boards looking into this issue and passing this resolution, hopefully, forward, because again, it's, it's a huge educational issue for us in trying to get the understanding out to the community of what a big incident. Anytime, I would say at least 50% of currently, the, the people that are in the burning unit are due to honey oil burns right now, and Dr. Greenhall and I have been trying to get this message out, and I appreciate everything that you guys are doing and doing that. So, thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Mike. Anyone else? Oh, here.
Walt White, Fire Chief, City of Sacramento. I also want to just express my gratitude. Supervisor Serna reached out for some information, what we could help provide to this, and we are very appreciative of there being some regulation on really the, and that the legislation be, or the ordinance be written very responsible to focus on the specific issue, which is the, the non-odorized. I mean, we all understand that there is some more legitimate uses for, for butane, but the, the non-odorized, in addition to the, the human toll that is taken with the injuries and the burns, it's created a lot of economic cost to the agencies. It's tying up valuable resources, not just fire companies, but hospital beds, and creating a lot of expense to treat the victims and to prosecute the perpetrators. So, I appreciate your, your.
Appreciate your support, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, anyone else? All right, very good. Well, thank you for all your support and input on the proposed ordinance, which is the first reading today, so bring it back to the boards, Mr. Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to belabor the point I think we heard very clearly from local fire officials, probation, or sheriff's office, and I do want to thank the folks from law enforcement that showed up today, today here, and please extend my thanks to Sheriff Jones and Chief Seal for their support of this, this ordinance. I think it's pretty clear from the testimonials and the experience of those that have actually seen these explosions, the aftermaths of these, of these fires, not just the property damage, but more importantly, the injury and death associated with this, that this is something that is, I firmly believe is somewhat out of control at this point. I would go so far as to say that if it is the will of this board to support the ordinance today, I'd like to encourage certainly our other sister jurisdictions in our county, at least, maybe starting with our county, to also consider other similar policy, because if this ordinance is passed and is put into effect, certainly you can go across political boundaries and depending on the rules there, purchase unlimited quantities of butane, refined butane. But I think the more and more we see this problem continue to, to develop and grow, I think it's going to be more and more incumbent upon local policymakers to take seriously this, this threat. So, I'm going to move the item and ask for my colleagues' support.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Serna. Anyone else?
Second.
Okay, so moving second to approve the recommendations outlined, introduce the ordinance, and return for final adoption on May 23. And if nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you all for being here, and hopefully it'll help some of the enforcement activities. I find the name of that one product pretty interesting, torched. Thanks, John. Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Item number 56, requesting a procedure for an appointment to complete the remaining term of retiring assessor Kathleen Kelleher.
Good afternoon, Mr. Devine.
Good afternoon, Board Chair and Board Members. I'm glad they moved the combustibles away from me. In front of you today is a process in terms of picking a, an appointment to complete the remaining term of retiring assessor Kathleen Kelleher. She's retiring on May 13, and her term expires the first Monday of 2019. So, approximately 19 months that we are looking at a process in which to fill with an interim assessor. And before you is the process that we have in place. We're asking that the county executive conduct a recruitment for the assessor vacancy. We're establishing minimum qualifications. Applications will be rated based upon meeting the minimum qualifications, and then we will have an interview, an open session here. And we are anticipating this process to kick off. The opening period would be starting next week, and come back to the board with interviews in. And come back to the board with interviews in sometime in the two meetings in June. So that's what the process we have outlined. This is consistent with the county charter, which also defers over to the government code, and is something that we are, wanted to seek your approval moving forward with.
David, it's still not clear, though. Are we under any timeline to fill the vacancy once the position becomes vacant? Vacates on Sunday, May 14th. And so is there a 30-day period by which we have to fill it? Is there a 60-day period due as expeditionally as, and feasible? So what is the prescription?
Well, Government Code Section 25304 identifies a reasonable amount of time. It doesn't give any specific timelines. So that's where we're trying to get this done within 30 to 60 days.
That just wasn't clear in the staff report. I shared this with Mr. Gill yesterday, and it just didn't, you didn't say. You just kind of left it processed, but you didn't say you need, we need to do it by this amount of time, or that it prescribes a reasonable amount of time to what you just said, so.
We'd like to get it done as soon as we can.
Okay.
One of the things, Mr. Chair, and members of the board, when Ms. Kelleher retires, the duties will go to the assistant. So we will have an, and the duties will be.
Enacting.
Enacting while we go through this process.
Okay. All right. This is the first time.
I couldn't hear what you said.
That we do have, Ms. Manley, who is the assistant assessor, will take on the duties while we finish this process.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we needed to look at agendas, though. We've got not only budget, but we've got a, you know, a process for the DOT tax, there may be some other items that are coming back. And so depending upon number of applicants, how this board would choose to do the public interviews, like you see, at least a better part of an afternoon or morning being dedicated to it, depending upon number of applicants and, you know, equal amount of time. And again, the format will have to be, again, I think, clear to all the candidates, and maybe there's, it'll only be a very small number. But in the event that there are several, then we need to make sure our agendas allow for that, so.
Correct. We will manage the agenda with that.
Okay. Very good. All right. Any other questions then? So you're gonna announce the opening when?
Monday.
Monday, okay. So May 15th will be the announcement, and then what, you'll do a two-week process?
We'll do a two-week, keep it open two weeks, have it close on Friday before Memorial Day. I think that's the 26th.
All right. 26th. Okay. Very good. Thanks, Dave. Okay. I don't think you need any action, just direction around that. Do you need action on this?
I don't believe, I don't believe so. I think if you just.
Yeah, because it just outlines how you're gonna do the process.
Outlines, yeah.
So you'll be back to us, so, all right. Very good. Okay, that's a receiving file. All right, we have some appointments, and I know we have some adjournments, and maybe some board member comments as well. So we'll go to the appointments.
Item number 57, your nominations. We're continuing to May 23rd Sacramento County Mental Health Board and Sacramento County Youth Commission. We're continuing to June 6th Cemetery Advisory Commission, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4C Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, In-Home Supported Services Advisory Committee, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And your today's items, Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Peters?
I'd like to nominate Thomas Roten and Tina Vanilla.
Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Peters?
Please continue to May 23rd.
Okay. Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Peters?
Please nominate, or I'd like to nominate Andrew Keller, and continue the remainder to June 26th. Sixth.
June 6th.
June 6th.
And then Natoli, that we're continuing to June 6th.
Yeah, continuing that, yes, I concur.
Okay. Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board. Supervisor Natoli?
Yes, I believe there's a interview pending, and continue this to June 6th, 2017.
Okay. Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Serna?
I'd like to reappoint Henry Liu.
Okay. Thank you. Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to June 6th.
Thank you. South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Serna?
Please continue to June 6th.
And Supervisor Kennedy? That concludes your nominations.
All right. That takes us to the bottom part of the agenda. So we do have a couple of adjournments, and let me take board member comments and county executive comments first, then we'll go to the adjournments. Okay.
I've got a couple of announcements. On May 23rd, we have a fairly busy agenda again. One of the big items that I want to spotlight is that we had a report that was due back to the board, and that's a decision on vote by mail. So we have slated 60 minutes for that at 10:15 to have that discussion. We also are gonna have a report back from Sacramento County Medical Dental Advisory Committee, which is another fairly extensive report that we'll be presenting to you. In the afternoon, we have the Child Protective Oversight Committee report. And on the 24th, which we opened up Wednesday afternoon, is we have numerous planning and zoning items. And one of the ones I wanted to spotlight for the board is at 3:00 PM is a workshop on the Climate Action Plan. As the board knows, we've been working and implementing the state greenhouse gas reduction, and we have done a lot of work and a lot of community outreach. And the intent that we have is to come back to you, give you a framework, what we've been doing, and where we see this item going in the future for you. So again, a little bit of apologies, but there is a lot of stuff coming to you on the 23rd and 24th.
Okay. Very good. All right. Mr. Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to let the county executive and the board know that, as was mentioned, I believe on the 23rd, you're bringing the vote by mail item back to us. I did have a chance to speak with Secretary Padilla, and so we should, you should, from your office, Nav, reach out directly to the Secretary of State's office to give them the details, the time, and the place. He did express some interest, if his schedule permits, to actually be here to provide some testimony.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll do that.
Could I just ask on that? Because we've had the conversation back and forth, but this, this is one of those things, depending upon what action we take, we may get more feedback after the fact than we do before we contemplate any action. I'm just wondering if there, I know we have the county website, and we have people that follow us and so forth. I don't know if that's gonna get us to a very broad distribution. But I do think that it might be one of those things where if we reach out to, certainly to the B and do through our county website, that, you know, they choose what they want to cover. But I do think that this is important enough consideration at the juncture, because we have some timeframes that this is gonna have to fit by, and obviously there are some financial commitments, but it will, it could affect the manner in which people will cast their ballots as it relates to vote by mail, voting centers, the traditional voting booths in precincts throughout the county. And I just, I think that it's important to, recognizing where we are with the migration towards vote by mail by choice, there's still a pretty, you know, healthy segment of folks in this community that like going on Election Day to their polling place in their, you know, community, whether it's in their local neighborhood immediately or not. And so I just, I don't know if there's a way, now, in light of that, try to get that information out a little more broadly.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, maybe through some of the media outlets that, if they choose to cover it. Because I just, I think it's important enough consideration, and once we act and set a direction, again, we could certainly change our minds, but it has fiscal consequences as well as some timing for election cycles as well, so.
We will also work with your districts. If you have a preferred publication in your district, you want us to put the ad in, we can do that, too. We'll work with the B and with other news outlets.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Any other member of the board have any other comments?
I do.
I know you have some adjournments. Okay. Comments, good.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to ask you to look at the TOT applications. I got back from Washington DC, there were two of the largest binders I have ever seen of all the applications. And I don't think it's possible that we can go through them, 138 or something like that with all the information, and a lot of people want a meeting, and I think there needs to be some process put to this. I mean, things just like divvied up between sports and arts and community benefit things, but also some understanding of who the groups are and what their financial background is. If I had asked Economic Development to talk to the regional foundation about how they go through big day of giving on the applications there, they, they look into the financial stability and other things, so that we don't accidentally give away our precious TOT money to a group that goes out of business the next day. I mean, a lot of other things in there, too. But, I mean, I know it wants to be in this budget, and maybe we pass a certain amount, whatever it turns out to be, and then we continue coming up with the process, you know, and deal with it later in the summer. I don't know what the right answer is, but there's, it's untenable the way it is.
Yes, I will take that on. I am scheduling a meeting with Don's office to go over what the process will be in June, so by May 23rd, we should have a report back to you on what that will be.
Okay. And then the other, one thing is, I apologize to everybody for my hearing problem. I'm going to try and get into the doctor tomorrow.
We didn't notice.
What?
What? What?
Oh, brother.
No sympathy from this place.
Yeah, I know. It's okay.
Okay. Mr. Serna, and then back to Ms. Peters for some adjournments. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to take this opportunity to, once again, express my great disappointment. As was recently reported, actually, back-to-back days, we had some very unfortunate incidents of dog bites on the parkway. And while my office was certainly made well aware of the one that was most highlighted in the Sacramento Bee weeks ago, the response that I receive every time there is something like this that is publicized from my constituents is not something that I wish wouldn't happen. Quite frankly, sometimes when these unfortunate incidents happen, it elevates it to a place where it sparks an exchange with my constituents in District 1 that want to enjoy the parkway without threat. And it's healthy in that regard. However, it continues to be an issue that I've asked the county CEO countless times now, what are we going to do differently? I know that he has explained to us beginning of the calendar year that there was a plan to adjust in terms of deployment of personnel, and I believe that adjustment has occurred. But now there's yet, I think there's yet another plan to adjust. And I, while I appreciate and understand the need to do that, this absolutely cannot continue. I mean, we, when we have our constituents that are feeling forced to carry bear spray with them, when they're attempting to ride their bicycles through a parkway, you know, alarm bells should go off for everyone. And so I'm not taking this lightly, just as I don't take lightly any of the other grievances, rightful grievances that get expressed my way when people are not able to enjoy their parkway. And so I'm looking squarely at the CEO's office that come our budget discussions, that we're gonna have that conversation, and it's gonna manifest itself in the form of your recommendations, Nav, about how we're gonna do things better and differently, because this absolutely cannot continue. It's not sustainable, it's not healthy, it's dangerous, and there's absolutely no good answer, quite frankly, right now, today, for constituents that want to pursue a legitimate activity on a parkway that is anything but hospitable.
Okay. So, and that was bear spray, not hairspray.
I got it.
Was that for me?
With that, Ms. Peters.
I have two adjournments today. First, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Gus Bagatellus. Last month, we lost a prominent businessman, Mr. Bagatellus. He worked in the glass industry and eventually established a successful glazing business with his sons, who continue to extend his legacy and expertise into the future of Bagatellus Glass. He was a son of immigrant Greek parents who grew up with four brothers in San Francisco. He was a football star at Balboa High School, and later played at the University of Idaho. He really lived the true sense of the American dream, being successful in business here in Sacramento. A caring husband and patriarch to a large family of four sons, one daughter, and six grandchildren. He will be deeply missed by his family and to all who knew him. And I'd like the board to adjourn in memory of Mr. Bagatellus. Then, as tragically, on April 26th, Fusako Petrus of North Highlands was out for her normal morning walk that she'd taken for some 40 years with a 61-year-old friend on the track at Highlands High School. According, the neighbors tell us that she had been walking there for 30 or 40 years and always felt safe on the track. A young man approached her friend and started to attack the 61-year-old woman. Mrs. Petrus became aware of it and tried to fend off the attacker with her walking stick. But he redirected his anger, killing her and injuring her friend. Now makeshift shrine with candles and flowers is in front of Mrs. Petrus's neat one-story home with manicured trimmed shrubs. The accused murderer was arrested quickly and arraigned in Superior Court last week. Her death is tragic and shocking, but I'd like us to remember her for who she was and not how her life ended. Neighbor said they were not surprised that she tried to stop the assault, because that's the kind of person she was, also caring about each other, always caring about each other. She was a native of Japan and met her husband Alfred, who was in the US Air Force after World War II. They settled in North Highlands and in 1968 purchased their home. She was a store clerk at the former McClellan Air Force Base until she retired, and she became a widow 15 years ago. She lived in a very close knit neighborhood where all the neighbors get along, they help each other with routine chores, like taking out each other's trash. And in 1986, she was taking out others' trash. And on the 26th of April, when she came to the aid of her friend, her actions were anything but routine. They were heroic and unselfish, and deserving of recognition for her bravery and courage. And I'd like to adjourn today in her memory also.
Thank you for, both of those are adjournments, Supervisor Peters, and this board, again, with our sympathies, certainly to both the families and friends of these two fine people. We will adjourn today in memory of Gus Bagatellus and Fusako Petrus. Okay.